Hi, everybody. Welcome. We want to open the meeting and first of all, just to announce that we do have a quorum. So I am Suzanne Jafarian, and the chair of this committee. Still learning the ins and outs of it, but that's my role at this point, even though Ethan pretty much does everything. Ethan Stiles is the secretary and who's present. And Lucas Kowalski is our third member. And we also have Dave Alberti, who's an alternate. And now...
Alan Wheelock.
Alan Wheelock, second alternate. So, welcome, Alan. So, we want to record the attendance. We have the applicant. No town council.
No, we didn't ask for it.
Okay. I think we have a few members of the public? Okay. Were you guys at the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay. You were all here at the last meeting. I know we had quite a few people at the last meeting. And we didn't end up taking a vote because there was only the two of us. So, we want to go ahead and be able to bring this to a vote. And just so, in terms of, so we're going to do a testimony portion like usual?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're going to open the testimony portion of the hearing. And if you could just identify yourself and your address to me when you speak, that would be helpful. And we want to ask the applicant first to present your appeal as to why you're here.
Before we do that, let me get the preliminaries out of the way so that everybody knows where we are here. So, all right. So, the application, we have an application here. What we're going to be talking about, what we're going to be considering tonight is an application for a special permit to construct an event venue. And the application was filed on August 21st. And the hearing was originally scheduled for October 9th, but because I was ill, it had to be rescheduled. We did publish notice of both the original date twice and the second date once in the Plimpton Halifax Kingston Observer, I think it's called?
Reporter.
All right. So, we did publish three times in the newspaper in total. And I did send out notices to all Butters, and I have certified mailing cards. And I think that's pretty much it. And we need to just make sure that everybody's aware of... Oh, and I should also advise everyone formally that this hearing is being recorded by Area 58 Community Access, but it will ultimately be the decision which will constitute the official record of this hearing.
Okay. Is he video recording too or just recording?
No, he's video recording. The cameras are there and there.
Okay. Good to know. How do I look now, Mike? Okay, awesome. Well, then, why don't we get started with the applicant?
My name's Jeff. Should I move?
Yes, please.
Thank you. My name's Jeff Perret. I'm the owner of 387 Main Street. And I'm here to obtain a special permit to put up an event venue. I think the last time we were here, I kind of explained what the barn is. The barn is 1793. I bought it out of Ohio, and I'm looking to dismantle, relocate, and re-erect.
I'm sorry, Mr. Perret. You bought a barn that was originally constructed in 1793, and you wish to transport it here, dismantle and transport it here and re-erect it on your property?
Correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, I wasn't here last time.
Sorry. So, I'm looking to basically house events, weddings, functions, birthday parties, holiday parties. It's going to be located in the back half of my property, kind of out of sight, out of mind. The Butters, one of my Butters is here, the other one I think is on his way. But I'm trying to respect the Butters and the neighborhood and, you know, all those that's going to be affected by it. Basically, keep the noise down, keep it all back, kind of, you know, set it off the street. I submitted some photos. I think we came up with, I think it was over 800 feet off the road. It was out back. If you have Zoom, or if you can, there you go.
Let's see.
So, the structure in the middle, that is the barn location.
Is that this one here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
The one we see from the street existing that's underway now is somewhere in the city?
That's right where your cursor just was, right there.
Yeah, okay. That's the one we see.
So, the other black rectangle and the dots, that's for a future down the road. That's more agricultural horses into arena. The grain bins, that was for, you know, wishful housing at some point, you know, for basically people that wanted to stay over for the event. And primarily, the bigger one in the middle, that is the size of the venue. Grady Consultants, they did all the site work, all the site plan they prepared this for us. And we meet all the setbacks where, you know, we wanted to keep it ahead of conservation, you know, the wetlands. So, we kept a nice buffer in there. So, try to keep costs down, having to go to each board six different times. I mean, I don't see it being, you know, it's not going to be an everyday use. Maybe the weekends, if I'm lucky, maybe one or two. I don't know. Wishful thinking, if I can have two events in a weekend, it'd probably be one. So, I don't know where this is going to go. Maybe, you know, four a month. That's basically it.
Can I just ask a question as a citizen, a Plimpton resident, not as a board member? So, the parking lot, it's a pretty substantial parking lot. And one of our ongoing concerns in Plimpton is always our aquifer, protecting our groundwater. Is that going to be paved so it'll be impervious, or is it going to be pervious like gravel or something like that?
I believe, I'm pretty sure it's going to be gravel. And the only parking spots are going to be paved were the handicapped, which I think they need paved for their wheelchairs and such.
Yeah, I think because when you have a large impervious area, you get a lot of runoff, and you got the Winnetoux River right there, too.
Yeah, of course.
And it's kind of a parallel situation in town is the Satchuk corn maze. There's a lot of people and a lot of cars that go there every October, but there's no pavement at all. So, the car, somehow they park a lot of cars, but they've parked on the field.
Right.
And it seems to work.
Yeah.
Just something I'm curious about.
So, one other thing that you just, you hit on, I am on 58. I do have neighbors. Every event is going to be a mandatory police detail, one to two officers to make sure the flow of traffic. I don't think it's going to be a bumper-to-bumper traffic. When people have weddings, they come in before the wedding, before the ceremony, and they kind of filter out as the night goes on. Not everyone leaves at once. So, you know, I feel that out of respect for the neighbors, having a police escort or a police detail will kind of cut down on any type of noise or traffic.
So, as I look at your plan here, if I counted the spaces, you would have, I think, 114 parking spaces or roughly?
It was either 114 or 120.
Okay. Yeah, I see. 21, 21, 21, 37, 5, 5, and 4. If I did it right, it would be 114.
Okay.
And you say most of that you would have gravel except for the, I think you designated four spaces for handicap?
Correct.
Okay. What are your hours of operation? You know, how early and how late would you be running these events?
How early? Again, you know, if it's a birthday party, I would think birthday parties mostly start at noon time. Weddings, you know, I kind of left it up to my neighbors, you know. We don't have a noise ordinance, I don't believe. Is that what I'm hearing?
We don't.
But what I would do is, listen, out of respect for the neighbors, you know, there's not going to be a band outside in a snowstorm, you know. So, I would say that if there is a live band or a DJ, you know, it would be wrapped up by 10 o'clock or inside if it's going to be after the hours. But, you know, I don't see most weddings going beyond 11 o'clock at night anyways. And again, out of respect for neighbors, you know, I'm going to kind of let them dictate the time.
Now, this event venue, are you, now, obviously, you talk about birthdays and weddings, you know, there will be food and drink present. Is it strictly catered in, or do you have any sort of kitchen facilities that you're preparing to make?
As of right now, it'd most likely be catered. I don't have that answer. But short answer, catered, maybe long-term, maybe we would do something in-house. You know, obviously, we have to comply with Board of Health and all the regulations handling food and water and such.
And, you know, and I know that I'm not 100% of the regulations, but what about alcohol? Do you need to obtain like a one-day serving pouring license?
That is a good question. I believe to obtain a liquor license, that's a select board. I think they make the ruling on that.
Even for a one day?
Yeah.
For every day?
Right. I think it'd be per function. Again, whatever the requirement is, whether it's your thing or per event, per day, I'm open to whatever they require. I haven't gotten that far yet, so I'm kind of green in that aspect. I apologize.
Yeah, there's some hurdles out there with Board of Health and Planning Board, CONCOM and so forth, but you're ready for that.
Yeah.
Who would license the project? Would it be the Planning Board? You have a business license, right?
We don't really, you know, give out business, you know, we don't have a business licensure program. I don't think that Planning Board has any involvement as this project's not creating any new public ways. At least that's where I come from. You know, obviously, there may be an issue with Board of Health because we're dealing with a septic system. Well, actually, the reason, my next question, the septic system, is the septic system rated for the bathrooms that you need to provide for your guests?
Correct, it is.
Okay.
Go on occupancy, not on bathrooms. Because how many people the venue can hold?
And what is the occupancy rating for the system?
The amount of people was 200 people. And Grady Consultants, they designed the system, which I don't have yet, and he forgot the meeting was tonight. But basically, he said that the system would be able to accommodate 200 occupants.
Okay. And obviously, you know, if you, so the system that's shown on the plan here, is that the existing or is that the expanded system that we're seeing?
That would be the new system we're going to be installing.
All right. And obviously, you'll have to go through Board of Health.
Oh, of course.
Maybe CONCOM for that sort of thing.
Correct.
Okay. Light, next thing, lighting. Do you intend to have outdoor lighting, you know? You know, they have many types of lighting, you know, available, halogen lamps, that sort of thing. What are your thoughts about, you know, lighting the venue at night where it may, you know, other people might, you know, could be discomforted?
Well, I think the Lumens, I think the, most towns, they don't approve uplighting. Most of the lighting that I'm going to be doing is strictly landscape lighting, LED, low voltage, just basically to kind of direct you into the parking lot.
We do have a dark sky by law. You guys should take a look at that.
Yeah. In as far as lighting up the building, it's not like I'm going to be having the strobes and everything else. I want it tastefully done, but also not impacting someone trying to sleep to the right or left of me.
Okay. Now, you know, when it comes to the special permit, I believe that this board does have the authority to put reasonable limitations on the permit. And if the applicant finds that they're overly burdensome, then he can appeal, of course. But, you know, the sort of limitations that I think we're talking about here tonight would be the sort of ones that I would expect to see on a permit if we grant it, you know, essentially baking them in. And I think, you know, so far from what I've heard, you know, no one has, you know, expressed any strong objections to what the applicant is proposing, but we've not yet heard from members of the public. So, if there's nothing else from the applicant at this time, I would suggest that if any member of the public would like to speak about this proposal or anything that's been discussed here tonight, I think this would be a good time to let them do so.
Okay. And just identify yourself.
Where are the two neighbors? My name's George Colby.
Would you mind going, okay, thank you.
I won't need that. You need it here.
It's for Area 58. They're recording.
Just keep calling ours. Here, I'm just gonna...
Yeah, George.
Come on down.
My name is George Colby. I live directly across the street from Jeff. He came to my residence, set my request, showed me everything that he had to show, talked to me, answered all my questions. I have absolutely no qualms about this going on, and there's no doubt in my mind about what he'll keep his word as he told me.
Yes. And of course, you know, we've just discussed, you know, we can impose conditions on the permit. So, if he violated them, then there could be consequences for that. But anyway, but, you know, but that is, you know, something that's not just for you, but for all the members.
I understand that, but my point is, I live directly across the street from him. So, if there's going to be any effect, it's going to be with me. And then Dean is...
What's your address number, please?
What's that?
Address.
380 Main Street.
380.
Directly across the street. And I'm 100% in favor of this, no qualms.
Okay. Come on up, Dean.
My name is Dean. I live next door. Oh, 373 Main Street. I just wanted to say, I'm probably the closest. And based on where he's putting it, just, you know, for you guys to know, it seems to me like if there was a band back there or anything, I probably wouldn't even hear it on my property because our house is way up in the front. Lights, honestly, I don't think that'd be an issue at all. And then I was curious about the alcohol. What if, like, the people who were doing the, you know, renting the space from them brought their own alcohol? Does that, I mean, I'm just curious, really.
That is a good question because normally, there are issues with, you know, proprietor premises liability. Now, obviously, I haven't had an issue with the bottom of my law practice recently, but anyway, but I think the general rule is that if you, if you, the owner, supply the alcohol, then you're, and someone gets into an, someone has too much strength to get into an accident, then you're on the hook. Now, if they supply their alcohol, then I believe the premises owner, again, you know, talk to your own attorney about this, you know, get the true legal scoop because I'm just speaking off the cuff here, then that, then the owner is not liable. And I believe that is the person who brings the alcohol is liable. So, and that situation, you know, I think the general, I think the general practice with venues of the sort is that the, is that the person who's actually, you know, renting, essentially it's renting the space, is the one that's responsible for the, for any alcohol that comes onto the premises.
You mentioned you wanted to put something like for people to sleep over?
Yeah, that's in the future for the housing.
Yeah. I'm just thinking that'd be a good idea in case somebody does get hammered.
Actually, I'm glad you mentioned that, Dean, because I did want to, you know, is that, you know, I would think that he might need, you might need another special permit. I don't remember, since this is aggregate and business, whether a special permit's needed for lodging purposes. You know, essentially, because you're essentially, it is sort of like would fall under a motel type of use?
Yeah, or there's bed and breakfast bylaws, there's lodging, yeah, there's a lot of different ones, but...
I'm not going for that right now, though.
You would have to look at that before you put up...
Yeah. No, that's...
It's down the road.
Grady put that on the plan just to kind of, for the overview. I told him to leave it off, and he said, well, we'll take it off if they...
You can always take it off, and you can always apply as well.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not looking to build that yet. I'm, you know, I'll have to hit the lottery to build the second portion.
I'm thinking that'd be a good idea in case somebody does get drunk. They'd have a place to stay, and it wouldn't be a motel.
I'll just take a sleepy-yup place.
You know, there you go. Well, you know, I'm just saying, you know, if it makes it easier to do that now, I mean, because it's not a hotel, it's not a hotel, it's not...
It's an overnight cabin, and we allow overnight cabins.
Yeah. That's, when I say, I shouldn't say housing, lodging, I mean, it's, they're most likely going to be for the spring, summer. You know, I don't, I really don't need a...
Yeah, it's not long-term.
Can I see the...
Just prove it now?
I don't know if they can.
Would that be a special?
I would say, as a neighbor, I'd be in favor of that, just for safety reasons, in case somebody...
These look like grain silos.
Yeah, that's strictly for cosmetic.
Okay, okay. So, if you were to house people...
I don't have that rendering done now because that, those are the dots. I mean, it's basically just a grain bin that's 16, 18 feet tall.
Start housing people in here.
No. I mean, they can if they want, but...
I would just say that I'd be for the overnight thing if that's something we can do now.
I mean, yes, I mean, there might have to be a separate application that I don't, if it is, we certainly something we couldn't decide tonight because the hearing wasn't noticed for that.
That's fine.
Anyway, but it's in the future, so if you need to come back to us, come back to us, and we'll hear.
Would that be considered a special permit as well, or could you do it through the Building Department?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I don't know what the bylaw says about that. It really depends on what the intent, you know, what the usage, you know, is, you know, where it falls in our bylaws. Anyway, but that's something we don't have to decide tonight.
Okay.
I have a question to Ethan, if I may, about...
Oh, sure.
Some of the setbacks on the boundary of the property. It looks as if those grain silos or even adjacent to that, there's the future barn, 41 feet off of the boundary. And the parking lot up above that towards Jafarian's is 15 feet off. And we have tighter bylaws on that for residential where you've got five acres or more, a retreat lot, you've got to have 100 feet. I'm just wondering if this has been looked at by Grady?
Yeah, Grady, you know, when I spoke to him earlier, he said nothing's on there that he isn't comfortable with submitting.
Yeah. I'm not familiar with, you know, the business end. Is this being, you know, commercial question, whether or not...
Dave, you know, you bring up a good point. As you say, there's only 15 feet of clearance, the setback between where his, I believe it's 40 feet is the normal, is for structures.
Right.
And so, that's not a problem.
Parking lots are structured, determine that in the past, or a tool shed or a house.
If that is the case, right, and he has 15 feet and he's 25 feet short, isn't he?
That's why I bring it up. I'm not sure. Whatever.
I can ask him.
Yeah, I bring that up to the engineering guys to see what they think.
Would you want me to call him now?
Oh, no, I mean, I don't know, maybe. If we got to make a decision, oh, we can...
Well, I mean, because I was thinking that if that is, if there is an issue, then he would need a variance for his parking lot.
That's right. And any other structures that are inside of, say, 100-foot or an 80-foot buffer or whatever it is? I think it's 100 feet.
Looks like the future barn is...
That's 41 feet.
I thought it was like you needed, you know, the regular, not the setback, but the regular lot, you needed 20 feet on the front and 40 feet on the sides, and I can't remember what the back was.
Yeah, we could look it up, but I think it's...
He's going to find out right now.
20 feet on the sides.
I didn't know.
You've got to be 40 feet in the front, and in the back, I think it's...
I didn't think, and I asked him about that specifically, about the parking lot being 15 feet off, and he said it's non-pervious, and there was something around that we were talking about. He's calling right now.
It's pervious, it's like sand or gravel.
Sand, yeah, pervious, sorry. Yeah.
Maybe that excludes it because it's just like grass or something, I don't know.
Or dirt.
I think he said if it was asphalt, you would have to bring it back because that's a non...
Because now it's structural.
Absorbing.
Curbing and so forth, okay.
He said you guys require every 10-foot buffer for the parking lots, and you've got 15 on the plan there.
Okay.
If it's gravel, right?
Correct.
Scrabble.
Yeah.
Do you need a permit for this one? Because this one looks like it's 100 feet.
Have you looked at their wedding venue? No, it's not my favorite wedding venue in this plantation.
Although yours is more... This is a more substantial...
I never knew they even had weddings.
Yeah.
Obviously, driveway going to the edge of the road. There's also one that, just like here on that proposed building by the silos, looks like it's into the 100-foot buffer on a wetland delineation line.
Essentially, that's what Satchuk does.
Kind of cuts the building in half.
Looks like the future barn is going to lie within the 100-feet buffer zone?
Yeah, again, I think Rick just put it on there, just to put it on there because it wasn't part of this permitting process. He just, I kind of said, hey, can you put it here? And he dropped it.
We wouldn't permit that tonight anyway.
Not permitting that tonight, and that's for future plans. And he did say, if we are going to go ahead with that, we got to push it out further or shrink it down.
Right, I'll make it smaller. All right, understood.
Is that structures setback from the side?
I'm sorry?
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, they're talking about the future barn, but it's not...
The setback's only 20 feet.
Right in here?
Agricultural, right?
Well, side lot lines, I believe, are 20 feet. But if there's a wetland there, I think, I don't know, what's that line where your cursor's on right there? Is that 100?
Yes, 100 feet buffers.
So, I don't know if it's 100 or if it's 125, I'm not...
It says 100-foot buffer zone.
I mean, I don't know, it just, when I built my barn, the building inspector said it was a 20-foot setback from the side.
Yeah, because we built this.
It's not from the side, it's wetland.
Wetland delineation that says, like out in the back where there's a river, there's also a 100-foot buffer zone along this line. So, nothing can be built here.
No touch.
No-touch zone, basically. So...
And I can't see that that far from here, but I don't know if that's the no-touch right where your cursor is.
Well, there's a line that goes right through here and continues up the other side.
Correct.
So, that building is on the no-touch zone.
Yeah.
But that, it's only for pictorial.
Right.
You couldn't get a permit for that.
Correct.
Move it, and you can.
I'm sorry, Dave, move what?
This proposed building...
Yeah, okay.
Is on top of the 100-foot buffer zone.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying.
It comes up this way and down through the building. You'd have to bring the silos and everything back away from that.
Okay, all right. So, I need to make a note of that, you know...
I understand this is conceptual, but there's a lot of things on here that...
I understand.
They need to get moved.
Yeah. And like I said, I told him to leave it off, but he said, you know, it's best to show him what you want to do in the future. That's why it's marked as a future project.
Dave and Lucas, did you have any, were you talking about any concern with the proposed barn and its setback from the buffer, from the buffer zone? Because that's a different part of the map.
There is 100...
That looks like it's a little within, don't you think? Because it looks like it's pretty, the proposed barn is within the limit.
I was a little confused because I missed part of what you were saying, and I thought you were, I thought you were talking about proposed barn.
Yeah, there's the proposed one, and then, oh, there's actually two proposed, but the one that he's going to move is the big one in the center. The long rectangular one with the silos is also proposed, but that's the one in contention. The long rectangular one with the silos is also proposed, but that's the one in contention.
No one else has any questions, I think we've heard all that we need to hear, and I think you can...
I think I would ask one more, if you don't mind. Has the fire department been consulted about the project?
I have asked the fire department. One of their main things, I think Mr. Colby can touch on this, they wanted a 40-foot opening coming into the venue. In obtaining, you know, in maintaining that 40 feet, along with an egress, and, you know, entrance and egress and exit. But yeah, they, from what I understood, as long as they can get the ladder truck, I think that's the biggest one.
No ladder truck, it's a tanka, 3,000-gallon tanka.
As long as they can get the fire apparatus close enough to the building, or around the building, that will suffice.
So those silos, they are going to be cosmetic only?
Correct.
And how tall?
I believe they were 32 feet.
32 feet?
I think 35 or, was it, is it 35 or 40 is the height by law?
35, you can't exceed 35.
Looks like they're about 90 feet in the picture.
It's not scale, it's...
It's the starship.
So, do we need to, just, does ZBA have any other questions? No other questions from the community?
I do have something to say.
Oh, sure.
I just wanted to speak on Jeff's behalf, Ed Lunny, 4 Maple Street here in Plimpton.
How do you spell your last name?
L-U-N-N-Y. Jeff and I's businesses intertwine, we're both in the boat business. I've been involved as a friend, helping out on this project. He likes, his style is antiquey, vintage. The lighting that you were asking about is going to be in that style. His business over in Pembroke is very near Pembroke Center, and he took a construction company that was in a space building over there. And it landscaping, and it's a beautiful piece of property, a stone's throw from the center, and one of the nicest-looking properties in the area right now. He also put a storage facility for boats in the back, with a second story that has an elevator that can move 30-foot boats into a second-story building. It's very pleasing to the eye when you drive by and look at the property. This has been going on here, he isn't moving as quickly on this, because his business is still underway over there. The interior of that building that exists, his farmhouse, isn't an ancient farmhouse, if you guys remember it from the past. When he took over the property, the cleanup took quite a while. The gentleman there that bought the building, Jeff let him stay. They were in trouble, and the guy was ill. Jeff let him stay in the building for the longest period of time, till he could get to the project and start on the property. I'm just really sure that this is going to be aesthetically pleasing, every bit of it as you drive by. It's been a work in progress, and visually, you can see that coming into play now, with the post-and-beam barn that's there. And the antique barn that he wants to put up in the back will be one of the nicest little venues that Plimpton has. And I just wanted to say that, he's come through with everything in our business that intertwines is perfection. And that's the way he works. I just wanted to speak on his behalf with that, please.
Thank you, actually, I do, actually, you know, since you've mentioned, I do have another question from Mr. Perret. Is this property currently used as a residence?
Yes.
Who lives there?
Me.
Okay, all right, so, and you live in the existing building shown on the map here?
Yes.
And you're going to continue to live here as this, at the wedding venue, I mean, the venue is going to be, you know, constructed?
Yes.
You won't be able to afford to go anywhere else.
Yeah, he'll be living in a silo.
That building was, isn't an old building, but if you went in there right now, it looks like a 200-year-old farmhouse on the inside. The flooring, he brought beams in, exposed beams everywhere that really weren't there. Full Circle wouldn't have been interested in that house. It just wasn't old enough to be in their venue, but if you went inside, the flooring, the beams in the ceiling, the ceramic bathroom floor that looks like it's 300 years old is just impeccable, and that's the way his work is, and that's the way his style is.
And the stone wall is beautiful.
And the stone walls.
My wallet's still feeling it.
The stone wall could be built three times, if I got it right.
I've gone by at night and pulled in, and Jeff was tearing stuff and throwing it in the dumpster that was finished. That's what you're going to get.
So, just want to ask for a motion to...
Close the evidentiary portion of the hearing. All right, I move that we close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and move on to the deliberation portion of the hearing. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
All right. See, we've done that at 7:00, oh, 8:00, 7:10.
So, this is opportunity for us to talk to each other. My understanding is, as a special permit, this is just the starting, this is the starting point. He still has to go through all the other boards and...
That's right.
And, you know, I think he probably already has a head start on this, because he's, you know, Grady has shown the wetlands and what he's intending to build. And obviously, we could, and I would suggest, if we were to approve this plan, we would be approving it for structures that, you know, are within not only the boundary setbacks, but within the conservation setbacks, too. So we can't, so I don't think we can approve the future barn as shown on this plan. And obviously, make a note of that in the permit, that's what we're approving, what we're not approving.
The same thing with any well, I don't know if there's a well right off, but if there were one, that would have to be approved by town before you do a well.
The well's on there, too, as well.
Is it, as well?
So what kind of conditions are you thinking in terms of...
Oh, there it is.
I mean, I think, you know, I think standard conditions would have to, you know, address hours of operation, so for example, we would suggest, you know, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., I think is reasonable. That accommodates both birthdays, you know, if young people want to do that early, they could do that, but not at 7:00 o'clock in the morning. And again, you know, and 10:00 p.m., that's when, you know, last call, you know, should be about 15 minutes before that, but anyway, but that, you know, that should be about the time when people are, you know, beginning to shuffle out. And, you know, obviously, we can't approve anything overnight for now, because we don't have that plan, you know, so, yes, I mean, I think, you know, yes, I mean, so hours of operation, obviously, you know, he has to comply with the bylaws related to liquor licenses. Let's see, lighting has to be kept to a reasonable lumen level.
It has to comply with our existing bylaw.
Okay, yeah, comply with existing bylaw.
Oh, dark-skies bylaw.
Oh, what about insurance? Do we need to address insurance, or that's just a private matter?
Yeah, that's not a physical property thing, like we're looking at here.
I mean, my, obviously, you know, what happens on his property is his own business. Now theoretically, you know, there could be a situation where our public ways might be damaged due to, you know, due to an inebriated driver or something along those lines, but I don't think we have to address that.
No, I don't think so. Yeah, I think we're clear of that, until it happens, and then that's a burden on someone else, other insurances, you know.
I mean, obviously, you know, as he's not conducting his activities on public land, we don't need to require a certificate of insurance from him.
Right, exactly.
Don't need insurance, all right, I'm clear. All right, do we need to address, do we need to address noise at all?
Well, there's no noise ordinance, as we discussed, it was brought up, but there is a noise issue, if there's anything out there that's disturbing, it's disturbing the peace, and that can be reported and acted upon, you know, by law.
Yes.
But there's nothing that I know of in the bylaws, unless it's in some section I've never seen, but...
But if we put in, like, hours of operation, especially if it's 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., I mean, I don't know, or how does that work?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, well, I think, you know, generally speaking, you know, after 10:00 p.m., you know, I think, you know, neighbors would expect, you know, not to have to, not to have to hear it, you know. Maybe, you know, is there anything like from maybe 8:00 to 10:00, or 7:00 to 10:00, that, you know, we may want to have to consider a noise ceiling?
If you hold a wedding on New Year's Eve, they're going to stay till the new year.
True.
But you can't have a ban, you can't have a ban outdoor past 10:00.
So maybe if it was 10:00 to 10:00 for outdoor, right, something like that, if you wanted to put a contingency, but I don't know, because... If it's late, I mean, like you said, if it's a holiday, or they go later, as long as it's indoors, could the contingency be more around after 10:00 p.m., noisy events inside, something like that?
Yes, we could, we could do something like that, I mean, pretty much, whatever, as I understand, whatever our conditions, if they're reasonable, I think that they would be upheld. You know, so...
But at the same time, like, no neighbors have expressed any concerns, there's no, nobody, and we met before, and he weren't here, and he went through a lot of, he answered a lot of questions informally for people who were curious what was going on, and what he was doing, but there's no objections, nobody's...
Was anyone, was anyone present at the last hearing that isn't present at this one?
Yes.
They were just curious townsfolk, they said.
That's what they said.
Some of the elderly women that had heard about it. And I actually thought there would be more with the, today, with the article in the newspaper about it, in the reporter, the front page of Halifax Reporter. I'm surprised that more people wouldn't come down just to see what was going on.
Yeah, and I think we had four more people, I think there were 12 people total, if I remember, so there were like four.
Well, Grady was here, the engineer.
Oh, that's right, and the engineer was here. And he did a great presentation in terms of, oh, yeah, you weren't here, but, I mean, I felt like he really answered questions.
Yeah, we were here almost an hour, just going over details.
All right, so, all right, so other things that we need, that we should address in the permit, the police detail, do we have a bylaw on that, or is that, you know, discretionary police department as needed?
Probably as needed, police department, by...
Yeah, because if he's doing a small event, does he have to have, like, to require a detail every time if he's going to...
No, I mean, I don't think for like 20 cars, he'll need a detail for that. But if he's got a 100-car wedding with alcohol being served, I think, you know, that has to be, so, yes, I guess police department has directed, or, okay, all right. All right, so, number of events, you know, we talked about this briefly.
Said maybe four a month, or four...
I was hoping for one a week, but I mean, again, I don't know...
You really don't know, he's stepping out.
I am completely out of my wheelhouse on this one.
All right, so, I mean, I, you know, I would suggest, I think it would be reasonable to permit up to two a week, or eight in a month, I think. You know, just because, you know, you might have, you know, some, you know, a hot, you know, a hot month after a lean month. I mean, I think that's unreasonable if you spread out eight events over the course of 30 days, you know, that would seem to work within the function of the venue without unduly burdening the traffic or the neighbors. So I would suggest eight events a month.
And is that something we have to put in, or is this just like, like as part of our stipulations for the permit?
As a suggestive guideline?
Suggestive guidelines.
I mean, because, you know, because the permit, I forget if they're three years or they're five years, that I think, you know...
It has to be renewed after so many, a special permit.
Okay.
I think it may be five years, I might be wrong with that, it's going to be here, with special permits.
So anyway, so what I, you know, so what I, you know, I think that, yes, I mean, we should put, I mean, to the extent that these, some of these, of course, are hard and fast rules, you got to comply with the bylaws. And some of them are like suggestions, guidelines, that if people start complaining, we hear lots of noise about, we might have to revisit some of those suggestions at a later date, you know. But anyway, but, you know, but that, you know, it's just, that's just the way it is.
That's not locking them in to just eat them up if it takes off. Because he doesn't know how it's going to go, I mean...
Yeah. Because if he's able to do 10, or if he can have a couple weekends with us, a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, I mean, you know, you don't want to limit his business.
Okay, yeah, all right. But at the other point, if it's every day, you know, I think we need to put the brakes on. I don't think that that road was meant for that sort of thing.
So maybe not more, if we really wanted to put a max, like, if you said three a weekend, if you said not more than 12.
Yeah, I mean...
Or something like that, just so we're not limiting the potential for growing business.
Yeah, I mean, of course, obviously, you know, the other thing, of course, if we put a hard, you know, if we put a hard limit, and, you know, he says, you know, "Hey, I've been doing this, you know, no one's been complaining, we've got a good system here, you can come back and ask to have the special permit, you know, modified." So it's not like we're locking him in forever to an arbitrary number.
I mean, because at certain times of year, people get married more on certain times of year.
Sure, the summer, yeah, summer months.
Could you give him an annual number?
We could do that.
Three a month, eight a month, you said?
Yeah, those just don't much...
96 venues a year, say 100 venues a year. Wedding season's...
Wedding season's over right now, as far as outdoor.
I do a lot of weddings, and I transport people to a lot of weddings.
And it's interesting, too, because I've noticed more Thursday night weddings, like, people will do that because it's less expensive.
Because the venues aren't available.
So...
Venues book a year ahead of time.
Yeah.
So if he gets off the ground here, he probably won't be booking anything for the next year.
Yeah, right.
It's going to take him a year to put all his stuff together anyhow.
That's true.
Once you get the ball rolling, then I think he'll do, you know, things will keep going, and you'll see how he works.
And it's obviously in his best interest, you know, to get the ball rolling as soon as possible, because the special permit has a limited lifespan, so it's five years, and you take one to get set up, that's only four years left, and we have to come back and say, "I want an extension."
Exactly.
But please remember that his egress is onto 58, which is near 44, which is near 495, so people are going to not be coming through town so much, when you get a lot of out-of-town traffic.
Yeah.
They're not going to be going through Plimpton, Plimpton Center, like they do to get to the Upland Club.
Or the full circle, the Kierstet Farm, that's the same thing.
It's only that first mile of 58, really.
Yeah, it's about a mile from there to the highway.
Yeah, it's one mile to my house.
Is there anything else that we need to, that we may need to address in the conditions in the special permit?
We were able to specify any screening if we want for parking areas, or if there's three dumpsters in a row there, we could say, put up a high fence, or, but we're not sure of the precise layout, so...
I mean, I think the only thing that I would be seriously concerned about would be the parking area, and that looks like it has some tree coverage from the map, and from, you know, but there's, you know, I mean, there's...
Oh, the tree line, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, obviously, you got, that's your tree, those are your trees, so if your husband had a problem...
Yeah, he doesn't seem to. I think his only concern, and I would reinforce this, too, is just, anytime there's a party, but even like a home, a party at your home, somebody's drinking, you know, just being careful about the driving, people leaving intoxicated, you know.
Yes.
So, but that's a concern if you're just having a New Year's Eve party at your house, so, I mean, we have to... So, I mean, we have to be conscious of that.
Yes.
And that's what he mentioned earlier.
However, a full event sort of like could multiply that by about 10, but the number of people that could potentially be
Yeah.
an issue, so, I mean, I mean, obviously, we have, you know, he has, he does have, he will have the details. You know, we, you know, so essentially, that's something for the, for the police to, you know, encourage people to, to behave responsibly.
Yeah.
And, oh, I don't think, does anyone conceive of any need for security at any of these events, private security?
Usually FBI details, that's what they take care of.
Especially if they stay the whole time. That's true, and that could be kind of, security as people are leaving.
Yes, I mean, well, actually, that, you know, you know, and actually, you know, a point I'd like to mention is the fact that our police department doesn't have a great, a great number of men and women who serve. I think that if, if he needs, he needs venues, I think that is one thing we should consider with the, with the limiting of the venue numbers, is because, you know, if the police officer is at his address, he may not be able to respond to an emergency at another address.
They wouldn't do that.
But they, they would call in details.
Yeah, they, they page that out to all the towns, whoever, if they can't fulfill it, yeah.
Yeah, details are usually off-duty.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't use off-duty.
Those people at weddings police their own, when things get out of hand. I mean, what does the Upland Club do? They don't have a bouncer, do they?
No, I'm not.
They have a set of stairs.
It's a 44 behind the bar.
So they trip going down the stairs.
Yeah, they, I mean, there's.
They probably would be able to.
I actually haven't seen a bouncer at a club in quite a while, and this is a wedding. I've seen them get out of hand, but usually a man gets hit with a shoe from a woman, right? Isn't that how it goes?
Well, nothing good happens after midnight, the old saying goes.
Yeah, so shut down at 11:30.
Well, we're talking about having contingencies with the special permit.
So, so, so now that, now that I think about it more, you know, the officer that you hire does not necessarily have to be a Plimpton police officer. Because, because we have our regional policing agreements with most of the other towns in the area, so essentially, most officers can pretty much act as, as officers, you know, in, in towns of, surrounding, to us.
They can't fill it with Plimpton cop, then they go to Halifax.
They'll grab Cobb or they'll grab the sheriff's department.
So, so between, between one, you know, as, as I would suggest, as long as the officer, you know, is covered by one of those regional agreements, that won't be a problem. Because then they would have police powers more or less coexisting with what a Plimpton police officer would have.
I mean, it seems to me that Mr. Perret has considered a lot of these things ahead of time, you know, already planning with the detail and so.
All right, so.
Another, one I just found, these special permits, they're good for two years, up to two years. If nothing's been, let's say, produced or acted upon, it expires automatically and then have to go for another one, but.
But would it be just like where he could come here for an extension on the permit?
It would have to be under an extension, right, unless there's good cause here, it says. So it's good for two years if the substantial use is not commenced within two years.
So he's got two years to, to start his venue?
Yeah.
Or he has to come, or he has to come back?
To be into business, let's say, for some, that's.
So I have to come back every two years to renew it?
That's not for the renewal.
That's if you haven't started billing.
To get it built and up online to some degree. So you're using it, you know, as.
Case COVID hits again?
Well, we'll excuse you for that.
He has two years to start construction, right?
Right.
And I'm not sure when a special permit expires by the ZBA, I think it's five years. It's not in the special permit section, but I've been able to find it. I believe it's five years. And that might be a state mandate and we just don't have it in here.
We're not authorizing any adult uses.
Yeah, that goes beyond.
I'm surprised you didn't allow that, I just.
Only in industrial zones, I recall.
Oh, I'm like.
So, you're not seeing top of stairs.
I don't want that next door. Okay, so, anything else before we?
I don't think, I don't think so. I think, you know, I think, I, I think the general consensus of the board has been expressed, and I think we could start to, we could start voting. Dave, can you, can you remind me what the, what the legal requirements for the special permit are? I, I remember they're not as formal as the, as the variance is, I think it's just pretty much we make a finding.
There's not, there are no like three conditions.
Yeah, we don't, they don't.
I think.
It's just that we, we have to be satisfied with the terms and conditions we make.
Yes, all right, so, okay, so.
So it's really just a one vote, we don't have to do the three things?
No.
Okay.
So essentially, we vote whether to grant the special permit with the conditions that we agree upon.
And the conditions were the hours?
All right, so, yeah, all right, so.
Detail?
All right, so, all right, so let's, let's talk about the conditions, all right? So first, there's the hours, we tended to, oh, actually, about the hours, now, New Year's, he's gonna have something on New Year's.
Well, I think the thing was during day, outside activities till 10 o'clock, anything else has to be inside. So then it's not a restriction of if he wants to have, if people want to stay around till 1:00 and they rented the facility and he's okay with it, then, okay, as long as it's indoors, the sound.
So why don't we say 10 to 10 outdoors, then 10 to 1:00 indoors, that covers the New Year's thing.
How's that sound?
And in any, in any overnight, but I don't really want people coming out of there at 3:30 in the morning.
No, true, true.
Neither do I.
Well, that's the thing too, is he lives right there too, he's closer than we, you know, the other neighbors, so.
That's when the security comes in, you gotta get out of here.
All right, so, all right, so, condition one is hours, 10 to 10 outdoors, 10 to 1:00 indoor, 1:00 AM. All right, condition two is, I think.
The detail, which, sorry to bring you on, but police detail.
Police detail.
With 30 people, 50 people.
Over 100, what do you?
You gotta think about 30 people, it's only 15 cars.
Exactly, so maybe over 100?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I would say 75, I think, would be a fair, would be a fair number, I mean, that's about 30, 35, maybe 40 cars depending on how people do it. Well, if you want to, if you want to do 100 people, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I think 100 is, I think 100 is quite reasonable. All right, so, okay, police detail for more, for 100 or more.
Yeah, it's not gonna be like Mansfield where you, at the end of the concert, there's.
Exactly.
They're gonna change the traffic.
Disaster everywhere, yeah, so we're not gonna have that.
And even coming in, probably people don't all come in at this time either, some people like to get there early, so.
It's gonna be the end of the night for them.
A lot of the weddings, we do transportation, so.
That's true.
The wedding party is usually taken care of, and they're the last ones to leave.
That's a good point.
You know, we're pulling the best man out, out of a swimming pool sometime, get him on the bus.
Oh, and, no swimming pools on this property?
No.
When you make one, though, shut up, Mike.
At that point, we have to talk about lifeguards that. All right, so, so, second condition, police detail, 100 or more, 100 or more guests. Okay, what's, what's next, all right? I think, you know, for, for bylaw compliance, should we just put something in generic like comply with all applicable bylaws? All right, so that covers things like.
It still has to go through, he still has to go through that.
Actually, I'm not sure what other board, what.
Zoning, I mean, zoning offices, building department.
Yeah, so.
And all the applicable trades down there, they'll, they'll watch.
Oh, yeah, I mean, because he's got buildings, he's got the electrical, he's got the plumber, yeah, the gas.
So you can just.
Water health is a big one, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so, oh, actually, I like to, all right, so, all right, so I'm gonna put three is, is comply with all applicable bylaws. I think four should probably be, I'd like to consider four to be a separate one of contingent upon getting a board of health approval for the septic system. I think that should be its own separate thing, all right, so.
That goes hand in hand with a building permit anyhow, he's not gonna give you a building permit if you don't have.
Was that you? Yes, true.
All right, so, then why don't we do a generic, you know, obtain all necessary permits?
There you go.
There you go.
Back down the river.
Okay, do we, do we need, all right, so, anything else? I don't see, let's see, do we need to put, well, you said the fire department wants you to put, have a 40-foot wide ingress and egress to the road, right?
Yeah, 20-foot entrance.
A 20-foot.
All right, sorry, it's 40-foot entrance.
40-foot wide.
Yeah, 40-foot wide entrance.
Is that, that's noted on this plan here?
It should be right in the middle, yes.
I was looking for it, I don't see it, but. The roadway end, but 40 feet, it looks to be like certain.
There and there, end of law.
You have small.
Yeah, it's got a scale on it.
Oh, wait, 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 I got big plans here.
I got one up here too, it, the.
Oh, yeah, see on here?
Go plan it out, this roadway here coming in, edge of pavement, this is what wants to be 40 feet.
Yeah.
Imagine even, if you gotta get to this building, you may need that 40-foot width to get a ladder truck to this building, my guess.
I believe it's 40-foot entrance.
Yep.
And then it tapers down to 20.
Okay.
Again, don't quote me on that, but again. Grady Consultants, he was adamant on the 40-foot entrance.
I think we should.
Exit, you only needed 20 feet, but they wanted to be able to get all the way around.
Right, so, so why don't we put condition, I'm on condition five here, why don't we put condition five is that exit to the street must be 40 feet as per fire department's recommend, requirement.
They would all command there's a permit that you've already, the fire department is not obligated to permit.
Yeah, it's just like any other permitting.
Okay. Okay, so that's our, that's under number four, which is obtain all necessary permits.
Yeah.
All right, so don't need anything like that, is there anything else, let's see.
You didn't have power here.
Oh, number, number, number five, the, the, the event limit, I think we said 100 events per year? All right, so that's number five, okay. And, I don't think, I don't think there's anything else that.
And then he can always come back if there's anything that needs to be altered.
A lot will change too if they introduce animals in here, there's a section in the bylaw for animal control. Everything about animals, safety and welfare of the animals and the people.
Do we need to include that?
No, that's, that's again, permitting later, they'll go for that.
And that's already covered under the obtain all necessary permits required preparation. All right, and number six, I think we should put in here that, that we're approving this based on the, on the plan, except as to the future barn.
Correct.
Show, sorry, show on plan 7, 4.
What do we make of an exception clause?
The future barn that's shown on the plan there, the one that has the.
We're not gonna permit that?
The buffer zone.
Because he's not getting a permit for that right now.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not here tonight for that future barn or the.
That's, he'll come back later.
All right.
So we're saying, based on the plans minus that building.
I, I think it's, might be located, yeah, future barn, future grain bins, that is not tonight, that's what, we're not here for that.
Okay, you're gonna come back for that.
I'm gonna come back for that.
All right.
And again, I know that got confusing, I told Rick to keep it off, and he said sometimes the zoning wants to see the overall plan.
Okay, I thought we were approving that, okay.
No, we're not approving that.
All right, good.
All right, so we're gonna put the future barn, the future grain bins are not approved.
Not included in this permit.
But the proposed barn, we are.
Correct.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
That's why I wanna see that, okay.
Actually, I did, I did have a question, what is this, this sort of, this sort of structure that hangs out on the, the corner, on the right corner?
Storage and then future catering, there is a patio, I think, in one of the renderings.
There's a picture up there of it.
There's a picture of it.
This one here.
Yeah, it's storage, outside bar, patio, and then the caterers want a place to set up.
Oh, okay, I see, I see what you're, what you're driving at here, it's, it's kinda like this thing here?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, so the barn you're moving is, is this one here on the screen that you're bringing in?
That's the one I'm bringing in, correct.
And this attached, looks like it might be an attachment.
Okay.
This, this is also with that approval.
Correct.
Later, off of here, that's proposed now, right?
That's proposed now, yes.
It says proposed for fire protection system.
You're gonna have self-contained fire protection in there?
Oh, good.
It's whatever, whatever the fire department wants.
Fire department wanna see that.
Okay, so that falls under the.
Fire departments.
Okay, um, oh, it's, oh, well, where'd you say you were bringing this barn from?
Ohio.
Okay.
Butler, Ohio.
Okay, are you transporting in pieces or all as one object?
I mean, to get it here all in one piece, we're gonna have to widen the highways. You're really gonna see me on the news. No, it, it does come, it's, it's the frame only, and they take it down and they re-erect it, it's all more than ten. Yeah, it's all timbers, you know, the oak pegs and so on and so forth. I'm sorry?
All wood?
Yeah, all wood, yes, all white oak, a couple hundred years old.
You showed pictures of it last time.
I do have an interior, I have an interior, I wasn't sure if it was a picture or a render, this one?
Yeah.
That's just a rendering.
Yeah, that's not the barn.
Because if it was all brown, you wouldn't see anything, so they wanted to have some contrast to it.
Okay. But this is what, what the intent of what, what you want it to look like inside?
That is, yes, that is on intense purposes.
All right, so, anyway, so, so, so these things and the plan are the, are exhibits that we need to, you know, make sure, yeah, make sure they're part of the record. I don't think there's anything else that needs to be introduced. Oh, well, one last, actually, there was one last thing I was thinking of before, that we talked about the, about the parking lot, right? And there was, you know, you raised the issue, Dave, about, about the setback, the 15 feet versus 40 feet. I might, I, you know, Grady says 15 feet is fine.
He said 10.
He said 10 feet, sorry.
Yeah, I even questioned that, and that's where permitting comes in, under that umbrella thing.
Yeah, so he has to, yeah.
They won't let him put it there if they see 10 feet, and it's gotta be 40.
15 or 40, yeah.
Or 80 or whatever, yeah.
So, so do we need to include that as, as a, as a condition that the parking lot has to, has to meet the zoning office's approval, or is that something we don't need to deal with?
Or is that part of the permitting?
That's all part of the planning board, a site plan review.
Right.
Okay, so you are planning to go to the planning board for site plan review?
I, I plan on going to all the boards, I believe, from the sounds of things.
Starting.
All right, so.
Does it matter that only a portion of the lot is sold for business? A whole lot is not sold for business, Grady points that out.
Yeah, well, maybe a third of it or.
It was like a corner, are they, by this.
400 feet?
Yeah.
Bring that in.
That's probably around this area.
Okay.
I mean, Rick knows about the first, I think that there's a line, the first 400 feet.
Looks like business ends right about here somewhere.
Correct.
Stuff is behind.
Right, which is why we are filing for a special permit.
Yeah, because it's not in business.
Yeah, and what he's doing is mostly off that part that is.
Oh, no, this is passed where the business line is, isn't it?
Yeah, I would say so.
That's why he needs a special permit.
Oh, I thought.
That's what he's saying, he just said, that's why he's asking for a special permit, because it's not within the business zone area.
Oh, Dave, can you, can you check that with the bylaws, you know, I'd like to see the, the table of uses.
Okay. Okay.
I, we may need to, we may, I wanna make sure that, you know, what he, what, you know, what is permitted and where.
Way at the top of 300, Dave.
Uh, what was he going for, this is, uh, commercial, lodging, office, recreation, I guess it would be outdoor, commercial, recreation, general.
Yeah, so light.
Light.
Okay.
Yes, ag rez, which he is.
Not allowed.
It's a special permit by ZBA, but the, the others would be allowed, business, light manufacturing, industrial.
Okay, so indoor, outdoor, commercial, recreation, light is allowed by special permit, but concentrate, uh, concentrator general is not allowed in the ag rez. Do we have definitions?
I think, my suggestion would be have the planning board clarify that, because it, it would be a shame to get this far down the road and then find out the lot's split between residential and business, and you may not, I assume this board can approve a business to be operating in an ag rez zone, if it's in compliance with the general zoning bylaws, but I think if the planning board should clarify, how should his business be categorized? Cause like, for example, indoor commercial recreation, concentrated, I, I have no idea if this business, but that's not legal in an agricultural residential zone.
So, um, do we have, do we have any definitions for these?
They're in here now.
We do.
Adult bookstore, adult, adult, adult.
So he could do an adult entertainment?
He could do, yeah, he could put any.
As you used to adult entertainment.
You can change that real quick.
Dogs dwelling.
Is, is this part of the permitting though, too, isn't this?
I mean, if we can't, if we have no authority to grant him a permit, then that, that, that cuts this, this process rather short, so I think we should make sure that we do before we.
Indoor, commercial, then, uh, building potentially.
That would still fall under all the permitting, they do, they're gonna pick up on that, though.
Yeah, it's, it's indoor, commercial.
Be worth a call to Grady on this one.
Such uses include assembly halls, auditorium, exhibit halls, performance theaters, and art centers, versus bowling alleys, skating rinks, billiard halls, gymnasiums, racing tracks, and shooting ranges. So, we may need to make a binding as to what this, as to what the proposed use is.
The lot spans both business and agricultural residential.
Yes, so the lot spans both agricultural and, and business.
And how, whether it's allowed depends on how it's categorized.
We're basically looking for the categorization on how this is gonna be used. So he, so Rick is saying that the barn would fall under the agricultural, and then the use of the barn would fall under?
Business?
Recreational.
So the, the business, the business zone stops, what is it, 40 feet in, I believe?
Yeah, this is your house here, and there's the barn.
So, yeah.
So, it looks like the, the green is, uh, business, and the, the rest of it, the, the main color is what?
One second, Rick.
Uh, what would that be?
Agriculture.
Agriculture, let's see.
Green is business, everything else is agricultural residential.
Right.
Looks like, looks like his driveway would fall within the business district as shown, but the, but the parking lot.
Ag rez, right.
And the barn is definitely ag rez.
Yep.
Is there any other questions for Mr. Grady, or?
Just, did he take that, cause.
Yeah, hold on, hold on a second.
I would hate, I would hate to see.
I'm gonna put you on speakerphone, so. I'm not even hopping in the car in a minute, so, but I'll be here.
Yeah, hi, Mr. Grady, this is Alan Wheelock, I'm on the zoning, I'm an alternate on the ZBA here, so, hi, how are you? What we just noticed, and I would not want us to trip up the project, is, the project does span both business and ag rez.
Sure, yes.
And I think there are, there are a lot of uses that are allowed in ag rez with a special permit from the ZBA, but there are also uses that you could describe this business as that would not be allowed, so I think how it's categorized or labeled makes a big difference.
Sure.
So, I'm not sure if you guys looked at that yet, but I'd highly recommend that you do.
Yeah, I think Jeff had gone over that with the building inspector early on.
Okay.
And that's why we ended up with the ZBA, because we did recognize that it's a special permit use.
Okay, did he tell you what he would categorize the business as?
Jeff actually met with him, so he, he may know better, um, I think he was thinking the barn would be agricultural, even with the use that Jeff wanted to do there.
Well, yeah, barns can be built in ag rez.
Yes, but that is not really used as a barn, as we generally understand in farming.
So, so the weddings are happening, housing inside the barn?
Right.
So it's an indoor event?
Yep.
So, I, I mean, it's tomato, tomato, however you wanna pronounce it here.
Well, let me put it this way, I'd suggest that we label the business such that it's legal within an ag rez area with a special permit.
What I think we would do in that instance was make a finding, that the proposed use falls within the indoor commercial recreation light, which is permitted by a special permit in the ag rez zone, and that solves the problem.
That gives us.
And I think, and I think a reasonable argument to be made, that, that the use that's proposed here is more similar to the uses that are discussed there, assembly halls, auditoriums, et cetera, than more regular businesses like a bowling alley.
Right.
So, I think.
Yeah, assembly hall, auditorium, exhibit hall, which is under indoor commercial recreation light.
Right, and because it's called, it's called recreation, it does imply that, in understanding that commerce can be transacted in such a facility, that it's not just for public uses, for example.
Yeah, I mean, it does seem to fit the indoor commercial recreation light, and that is, is that a special permit?
One thing I would say, you know, just to remind, just, you know, that everyone here is aware, that if we say it's, it tonight, you know, you know, two, three years later, someone else is gonna, could come down the line and say, hey, you said it was three years tonight, I wanna put it, I wanna put it in my, my backyard, and I have no business zoning anywhere near me, so.
Then they could.
But I, but I think you also need a minimum.
But they could buy it in the ag rez.
Yeah.
Still need access to it through the commercial part of it, so that's how they get into it, that's what you can claim on that one.
I suppose so, I think we could make a finding that due to the mixed zoning of the property, and the fact that the driveway would be within the business portion of it, we may consider this a special case on, on that basis.
I mean, it's gonna have minimal impact on the surrounding neighborhood, that's quite clear.
I mean, because as, as you're saying, you know, if someone else came, we could decide, no, it's not appropriate, cause you're down like a narrow street, or, or just a place where there's, you know, you know, you know, a lot of, you know, for example, near a bus stop, or, I don't know, something.
School.
Yeah, it doesn't mean we're locked into doing it, improving anytime soon.
Okay, so I think with that understanding.
Sorry, send your own rabbit hole.
No, that's alright.
Good to know.
Yeah, Rick's, Rick's pretty good with this, you know, so. It's a, it's a thought process, it's, we understand the thought process, and it's what we need to think about to get there, but I think those are all good findings that the board can make to really separate themselves from somebody wanting to do it in a residential backyard.
Right. So, anyway, so, um, so what I think we, we do, is we, is we make, first, you know, first we do a vote, right, and first we vote on a finding that this use falls within the indoor commercial recreation light category, and then if we, if we vote that, if we vote that to be the case, then we can move on to granting the, the permit with the conditions that we've discussed. Sounds.
Sounds right to me.
Alright. Alright, so, what, it's, uh.
Dave, can you go back to the table of uses, just to make sure, please?
What did he say?
I'm sorry, Alan, I didn't quite.
Just ask Dave to go back to the table of uses, just for a second. As if, the way the bylaws are written, if the table of uses says you cannot do it, you can't do it.
Let's go find another one here.
Yeah, it's, it's in 300, just roll up to get to it.
Well, these are, I think this is, these were definitions. Indoor commercial.
Light, okay, good.
Light.
Actually, it looks like you need a special permit for either the AR or the B, the business or the AR, under that one.
It does. Now, this was just put in recently, Alan, didn't we just put this, these, commercial rec?
Well, we updated, I mean, we, we completely redid it five years ago, but we, every year it gets updated.
Yeah, it's always something new when this.
So I think if you look at indoor commercial recreation light, and then you look to the right, AR is special permit, it's allowed, business, it's allowed with a special permit, light manufacturing, it's just allowed, and industrial, it's just allowed.
Dave, could you give me a minute, because we've, because he's talked about both indoor and outdoor activities, could you check and see if there's a definition for outdoor commercial recreation?
Should be a, a definition for everything.
I wanna see if they're, if they're, how similar they are.
Oh, no, that's not the one, uh, what was that, was in the definitions, I think.
Yeah.
Yep.
See, we can go down to the O's.
Outdoor commercial, general.
Light.
Light.
Okay.
Can you make it a little bigger, Dave, just a wee bit? Can you make it a little bigger?
Oh, bigger?
Yeah.
Yes, sorry.
Near side. Thank you.
Those in the feet, yeah.
Both of those are dealing with the natural environment.
Yeah, that's the beginning of them.
I think those definitions seem a little less applicable than the indoor ones, I, I think we can all say, but I kind of, you know, but in terms of finding inclusive usage, I kind of feel like botanical garden seems close-ish to the mark, picnic areas, a little further out, I mean, but the, but the, the general uses don't, you know, don't seem to be particularly applicable, um, you know, they, they seem to suggest more active activities in general than what I, or, and more regular activities in general than I think of what's being contemplated, what's being contemplated here.
I would use the indoor one in your recommendations on the other part of it.
Because I do recall one of the out, you know, one of the outdoor, the outdoors also may be, the light one can be dealt with by special permit. Oh, Dave, can you scroll down just to one more thing to, to parking area?
Parking area, garage, yeah, has to be, one of the use of employees, customers, or visitors.
Any area or structure used for parking on a booth, obtaining eight, 20 feet, so whether it's tied or not, it's an area used for parking, so this would, you know, constitute a parking lot.
Yes, I'm not, why do we have both parking area and parking lot, I, you would see the two would be the same.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying, the, the one, parking lot or garage covers an area, any area, such areas should be used for employees, customers, or visitors.
Well, his part, you know, his 110 parking spaces definitely falls within the parking lot.
Character.
Character.
Wouldn't that be, wouldn't be more parking area?
Parking area.
Because the parking lot is between eight and 20.
It's only up to 20.
Okay, oh, yeah, you're right, actually.
Parking area.
Yeah.
Cause.
Lot being the smaller of the two, I guess.
Yeah, well, the permits for the parking. The table that you had before.
Oh, the table, on the, on the plan?
Yes.
For.
Table of uses.
On the table of uses.
Oh.
You can have two Kevin Buried.
Parking. Parking. I don't think it has here, they don't divide it up that way.
You can do a search on the page for parking.
Yeah, I don't.
Finding page.
Think that's, that's not a, let's see, a vehicle storage, but there's no.
Parking lot or garage.
There's parking lot, okay.
But there is no parking area, it's on the parking lot, and it's not allowed to.
That's interesting. So where does that leave us?
Commercial service, store warehouse, educational uses, yeah, this goes beyond exempt uses, government agricultural, yeah, there's a lot that comes up on the ag that, that you're gonna have to look at when you get animals in, but we don't wanna go there now, cause it's a whole, whole other ballgame.
As an event venue, I don't think we can find, as an agriculture, as an agricultural use.
Right, right now, yeah, it can't be termed agricultural, even though it's ag rez, it's.
And is a barn, but still, the use of.
It's a barn, but it's not used for animals, so.
Depending what you classify as animals.
Yeah, depending on whose wedding it is.
Yeah, it's messed up by your drink.
Alright, um, well. Parking lot or garage falls under veh, under vehicular usage, and nothing is, nothing else is being proposed for that, you know, parking area doesn't see, is not in that category. Oh, and even, you know, it says, what is SPR?
Special.
Special permit required.
Planning board.
Planning board, PB.
Okay. Wouldn't this all be covered under the permits section anyway? I'm just curious, like, do we need to?
Well, he doesn't need, he doesn't need a parking lot or garage permit for, you know, essentially, either it's allowed or it's not, so, um, someone, someone could challenge that if they, if they argued that it was a parking lot.
It is, it is a parking lot.
Although we have something called a parking area, which is not so limited, but wouldn't it, but wouldn't it seem that a parking, a parking area that doesn't have a limit, which suggests that it is less than 20 as opposed to a parking lot, because, you know, parking areas, except for employees, might just be a few spaces, or it might be a, you know, an, you know, an ungrassy stretch of, stretch of pavement, you know, whatever it might be, so, in terms of the, in terms of this is a parking lot, you know, might there be, you know, might there be some multiple difficulty here, based on?
Is the parking?
The parking area.
It's parking area.
Cause it was two different, there was the parking area and there was the parking lot.
What is, what is Shawshank, what do they have?
But if, but my point is that if, if we've defined a parking lot as between eight and 20 spaces, and we say, that's not allowed in ag rez, that's only allowed in business.
I'm thinking a parking lot is like when you go to a Patriots game.
How could we say that a parking area?
It's tied and you have 400 cars, 500 cars.
Is permitted in a place where less spaces are not.
That's a parking lot, in my book.
I understand what I'm trying to say.
Well, where are this, is this lot proposed, is that in the?
For the customers, and parking lot, to see if you would like to.
But also, look, is it part of the parking lot, a parking area and the business?
It could be, yes. It could be, yes.
That's a town council, so...
Parking area is just a...
I'm sorry, Alan?
Wouldn't you just have town council weigh in on that?
They could do that, yes.
I mean, we could, we could also bring it to a...
It looks like the lot that's proposed here is on, in both the AgRes and the business.
That's what I'm just saying, yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Not 50-50, but there's a lot of cars on both sides.
That's what I mean, it looks like, I mean, I was estimating, but it looked like it went...
I mean, I mean, well...
Well, there isn't, there...
I mean, you know, for those spaces that are within the business zone, he has the massive right, from what I see.
Rick, would you agree that this is a parking area, not a parking lot?
I do, would like to keep it all gravel. The only thing that we need to pave would be some handicapped accessible spaces and really gravel, so it really would be a parking area.
So could we consider it as a parking area, it can be gravel of any size, but if you want to pave it, it's a parking lot?
Correct.
If it's lined.
And has at least eight spaces. I'm sorry, you said lined?
Lined.
Lined.
Okay, lined, okay, sorry.
Right. As opposed to just like, like what I have.
So this is a parking area, then?
Yeah.
Do you have a piece of blank paper? A little short, let's make some notes about this.
Yeah, it's gravel, you're not going, you can't have painted lines on gravel. I'm sure you could, but I'm not gonna.
I should, I thought I had some...
Would you, I did, lay the chains down, paint the chains.
I was like, I don't...
Yeah. All right, so, so I think, you know, there is, there's an issue about whether this falls in a parking area or parking lot, and I think, you know, that the best, the most favorable approach we take for the applicant is to consider a parking area, it can be one of no determined size, so long as it's unpaved. And a parking, and a parking lot would be eight to 20, or presumably more, you know, I'm not sure what happens if we're over 21, if we're 21 or more, but anyway.
According to that...
Eight to 20, and we assume that it's paved and lined. Anything, anything else is either a parking, either a parking area it's not, or if it's more than 20, it's not a lot. Although that doesn't, does that really make sense? I mean, because consider how many parking, parking areas Cisco has, they have, they have more than 20, and their thing is fully paved.
That's true.
I mean...
And that's Plimpton.
But that was before a lot of the bylaws went in, you know.
So what are, so it sounds like our bylaw would essentially, you know, impose a 20 parking limit on a new business.
If it were a parking lot, yes.
If it was paved and lined.
Paved and lined. But even, even the setback at, what, 15 feet off of your property, it considers, it's not a structure, so I guess it's, it's okay with that.
It's just an area.
So it's an area, it's not lined, it's not curved, there's no pavement.
Well, I didn't even, I mean, we didn't even get, we didn't get any kind of permit to do the parking over here. I mean, we paid, we, I don't know.
I mean, you know, it seems, you know, there's probably a fuzzy distinction between a parking area and a driveway.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, you can have a driveway that, you know, can be larger or wider than what strictly may be needed for your vehicles.
Yeah, but I mean, I have a business here, too, so, I don't know.
A home office type, you know.
I have clients who come.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
As chairman of the bylaw review committee, I commit that we'll look at that, to see if that needs to be updated. And we'll add it to our list, which we call our parking lot list, of things that need to be looked at.
Things that need to be done.
Things that need to be reviewed.
And that's tomorrow night, so, you're right on it.
Yeah, it's interesting.
So should we run this by town council, or, or, you know, or do we, or are we prepared to call it a parking area, so that we can give them this permit?
Can we prepare it in document now, with our own description of what a parking area is, without reference to the bylaw, and then we'll agree on that, you guys will vote on that, so that we can get it done tonight?
So we can move forward?
Yes, because otherwise, you know, we couldn't, if we need to wait on town council to provide an opinion, we obviously couldn't vote on it tonight, we have to schedule another hearing, and, and then make a, make a final decision on that date.
We can put an assumption down that a parking lot equals whatever we say it is.
And then we can't vote on...
And that we vote on that, and that it doesn't change down the road.
Okay, so with that proviso, now, we should, you know, we should warn you that, you know, that if some, if a member of the public who wasn't here tonight but didn't like your project anyway thinks that that's incorrect, they could conceivably appeal that, and you might have, you might have a legal battle, but that's something, you know, sort of inherent in the nature of the proceedings, because if, if we're, if we're wrong, and a judge later says, oh, yeah, that's a parking lot, that's not allowed in the bylaw, then your plan's going to have to be drastically altered to fit.
The only thing is, we haven't had anybody, this is the third opportunity that people have had to, right, or second, second opportunity that people have had to state.
Yes, although a person doesn't have to come here in order to...
To have an issue, I know.
So anyways, I mean, but again, it's a, it's a, you know, it's just 21, I think it's what, 14 days or 21 days, or whatever the appeal period is.
Twenty days from, from town clerk.
Yes, it's a fairly short, it's a fairly short period, and of course, if no one does it, then, you know, then, you know, congratulations, and start, you know, planning your move now, then, you know. So anyway, so I think, you know, what we should, all right, so now we got a couple...
It's like a motion, so we have three votes then, one on the parking lot.
Yes.
So I motion...
Parking area.
Parking area.
I would like to ask about the parking.
You got the idea.
Because it was...
Want to join up, boy?
Four hundred people, four hundred seats. What was the capacity for the venue, 200 you mentioned?
I'm sorry?
The capacity for the venue.
200.
200? Because of the proposed parking requirements, it says 350 seats, that you need 88 spaces required, but there is 114 spaces proposed, so it looks like for more than 450 seats.
Yeah, we overshot the amount of parking, because the parking's going to dictate how many people you can have in the venue.
Because there's some people...
Now, what actually, that actually reminds me, you bring up a good point, is, you know, I'm just putting it out there, about, about capacity sizes, is that something that we, is that something that should be, is included with the, with the permits, you know, capacity for the building, you know, 200 being the max, or do we need to specify that as a condition?
I think that's a function of the building code, actually. Based on the building code, use of the building, the building inspector runs that through the formula to determine the occupancy. It's a function of square footage of the building and the type of use, but it is well documented in the building code.
All right, so that would be essentially part of the, obtain all necessary permits, including a permit of occupancy, or occupancy size, or...
Yeah, the building department dictates that.
All right, then that's fine, then that's already covered, and...
Yep.
Right apartment, building department.
Yeah.
So it's the usage, the parking area?
Yes.
And then for the permit?
Yes, the permit with the, with the conditions.
Okay, so can I...
Parking area would fall under the building department, the other one's going to pay you an A on that.
So I think the idea, correct me if I'm wrong, is to determine if we are the board to approve the special permit, like, that's kind of what we're looking at right now. Are we the ones to say? So by doing a, you know, three level votes, so we're proposed to vote on the lot?
Yes.
To vote on the contingencies, and then to vote on the permit.
Well, we were discussing voting on the parking area, the lot usage, and the permit contingencies.
Okay.
Now, if, now, you know, what you point, point out, if the building department does have a contrary opinion, then...
It differs to them.
Well, I mean, because, well, at that point, if you, if you go to the building department, the building department denies you a permit because you've got, although, this, really, does building have anything to do with a park, with an unpaid parking lot? I don't think they could park that. Or the unpaid parking area, sorry.
They'd be more concerned with the setbacks than anything.
Well, you know, perhaps we should take no position on the parking area, because some, because if they apply and they get denied, and that's an appeal to us, so I think at that point, we may wish to reserve deciding that question.
In case he has to come back to us.
Yes, he has to come back to us.
Okay. So we're going to motion, so in a motion to vote on the contingencies, what we have to play.
We're going to table, we're going to table the parking lot issue.
And then address the parking lot.
All right, perfect.
We'll wait, and if you have to come back before us later, we'll deal with it there.
Because at that point, you know, we, you know, we've talked about it, but, you know, but we would be open to hearing what the other side had to say, whatever that might be, so...
Does that make sense?
Yes, so we could be persuaded otherwise if they come back on appeal.
Okay. So, so I motion to take up a vote for what we've outlined for contingencies for the project as far as the agriculture, the zoning of the property.
Okay, all right, so I will make the first motion, and I will move that we, that we find that under the, that the proposed usage falls within the, hold on, I want to get the...
Light.
Let's see, indoor commercial use light and outdoor commercial use light as, as explained and analogized in the, in the bylaws. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's part one. Okay, part two, is I make, is I make a motion to approve the special permit with the following, with the following conditions. Okay, the conditions that we've discussed are, number one, that the hours of operation shall be from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM for outdoors, and additionally, 10:00 PM to 1:00 AM for indoor use of the barn. Number two, that, that, that the venue show obtain off, police off-duty, off-duty presence as, as for 100 or more guests at any particular event, a police detail. Number three is that, is that the, is that the applicant will apply with all applicable bylaws of the town of Plimpton. Number four is that the applicant will, will obtain all necessary permits from the town of Plimpton. Number five is that we put, that we put a maximum of 100 events at the venue in a given calendar year. And number six is that we, we approve of the, of the applicant's proposed plan minus the future barn and grain brine shown on there. So with those conditions, I would move that we, that we approve the special permit. Do I have a second?
I think there's one mistake, the indoor from 10:00 AM, not only from 10:00 PM.
Oh, okay, so, yeah, so number one will be indoor from 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM, sorry, 10:00 AM in the morning to 1:00 AM in the overnight.
Yes, 10:00, okay, but he'll type that out.
Yes, I'll type that out, so we have to come back and, and agree upon a decision, a written decision. So, all right, so as, as corrected, you know, you know, are we all, are we all in favor?
Aye.
All right, then the special permit is granted.
Thank you. Thank you, board members.
And you'll get, you'll get a written decision to follow by mail, and I don't know if you want to make a motion to close the hearing?
Oh, let's, let's schedule the, the hearing to, the meeting for, to finalize the decision, to approve it.
So next week, right?
Yeah.
Do I have to come back again?
No, you're welcome, you're always welcome to these, the public hearing, of course.
But we just meet and just go through everything and, and sign off, so...
Does anyone have an issue with next Wednesday at 6:30?
I can do Wednesday at 6:30.
What are they waiting for?
Yeah, that's, no, that's the 27th, it's the day before Thanksgiving, I don't care, I'm not hosting.
I think I can make that.
Okay, would you come, too?
No, I'm fine. I mean, I can come, just give me the date.
Rick, do you have any more questions?
I don't.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll fire for the meeting.
Okay, thank you, good work.
Thank you, thank you.
So this is...
Rick, just thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yep, 6:30, and that would be about a half an hour. Pretty quick.
So the next meeting will be at...
6:30.
6:30 on Wednesday, 27.
And then you'll get something in writing, and I want to make a motion to close the hearing. You guys, second?
So, all in favor?
All in favor, aye. Meeting is closed, thank you.
Thank you.